Hey everyone, the Georgetown County School Board is now in session. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors here this evening. It is great to see students and staff and members of the public here and our district office staff. Thank you for being here. We'll begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the moment of silence. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the moment of silence. First thing on our agenda, we have some recognition this evening, which is always very exciting. We'll call Dr. Pamela Vereen to recognize the Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School FBLA. Thank you. Do we need to come down? Yeah, board members, we need to go forward.
Chairman Gaskins, Member of the Board, Mr. Price, District Administration and guests, good evening. Following the recognition of GCSD's 185 career and technical education completers in the ceremony at Georgetown High School earlier this evening, I am excited to recognize three more groups of students. This first group of students that I would like to recognize are the FBLA students from Carvers Bay High Early College and Career High School. Under the leadership of Melissa Alston, the school's FBLA students competed in the state leadership conference which was held in April. Ms. Alston and Mr. Oldham, the principal of Carvers Bay, if you would please come forward to assist me with the recognition of your students.
We would recognize third place in help desk Akasha Haynes. Next, we have Serenity Green who placed second in Intro to Programming. Sahira Warren placed first place in Future Business Educators. Let us recognize Asher Mesutesta for first place in Entrepreneurship. Lillian Bryant, first place in Client Services. And Alyssa Gamble, who has served as an FBLA State Officer for the last two years. These students will advance to the national level and will compete in Orlando, Florida this summer. Let us congratulate them once again. In April, Ms. Angelia Jackson, Georgetown High School's business computer science teacher and CTE department head, learned that her student, Avidin Wright, was selected as South Carolina's Fall High School Invest Right State Winner. Invest Right is a part of the family of financial education programs whose purpose is to strengthen economic opportunities across communities and to increase individuals' awareness of and access to the benefits of the global marketplace. The national writing competition of which Avidin was South Carolina's Fall State Winner is open to students participating in the stock market game. Avidin's essay was evaluated on rationale, on understanding of the subject matter and writing style. He and Ms. Jackson were celebrated at the 35th Annual Economics and Financial Literacy Awards Luncheon, which was held on May 17th at the Brooklyn Banquet and Conference Center in West Columbia. Please join me in congratulating Georgetown High's Avidin Wright and his teacher, Ms. Angelia Jackson, being accompanied by Georgetown High School's principal, Mr. Craig Stone. This evening, I am also excited to recognize the students and leadership of Georgetown High School's Navy JROTC program. Georgetown's program is led by retired Commander David S. Kaiser and retired Master Gunnery Sergeant Michael Blackstone. In April, Georgetown High School learned that their Bulldog Navy JROTC unit had been named the Most Outstanding Unit for Navy JROTC Area 7. They were selected as number one out of 33 junior Navy programs across South Carolina, North Carolina, and Georgia to receive this recognition. As the Most Outstanding Unit, Georgetown's unit will represent Area 7 for the National Most Outstanding Navy ROTC Program. Out of over 600 Navy units nationwide, they will be one of only 23 units to compete for the title of National Most Outstanding Navy JROTC Unit in June. At this time, for the third year in a row, Bulldog Navy JROTC has been designated as a distinguished unit, a title given to only the top 30% of JROTC units globally. In addition, this year, they also received the designation of Naval Honor School. These two designations allow Commander Kaiser to nominate up to six students, six cadets annually, and they are to any of the federal military academies. Here this evening, to accept this recognition, we have the former commanding officer, Cadet Lieutenant Commander Breyer Long, and the new commanding officer, Cadet Lieutenant Commander The former executive officer Lieutenant Jonathan Espinoza, and the new executive officer, Cadet Lieutenant Adriana Sanchez-Aca. Retired Master Gunnery Sergeant Michael Blackstone, USMC. And retired Commander David Kaiser, US Navy. Please join me in congratulating the Bulldog Navy Junior ROTC Unit from Georgetown High
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Mr. Price, Members of the Board, District Administration and guests. We have one final group of students that we would like to recognize this evening. Georgetown Middle School's band, under the direction of Jonathan Green, has been awarded the 2023/2024 South Carolina Band Director Association's Outstanding Performance Award. This is the highest possible award given to a band program in the state of South Carolina. The band accumulated points through participating and ratings earned at All-State and Region Band, the Concert Performance Assessment, the Solo and Ensemble Festival, and the State Marching Band Championships, where members of the GMS Band competed on the high school level with the Georgetown High School Band. This recognition speaks to Georgetown Middle's outstanding concert performances and individual student performances, as well as the high-quality teaching taking place in the school's band department. Accepting on behalf of the GMS Band are Band Director, Mr. Jonathan Green. Kelvin, oh, excuse me, Kelvin Funny. Jakim Grant. Malaya Green. Julian Guilermo Isless. Arthur Hemingway. Ayanna Palmer. Yanelyx Sanchez-Catto. And Jewel Thompson. Please join me again in congratulating these students. Now for your picture.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
One of my favorite parts of a board meeting is recognizing our students and staff. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, public comments. We have two speakers this evening. Just a reminder, the entire public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Comments or requests should be brief and to the point as possible and shall not exceed three minutes, and must not mention specific names or positions of students or personnel. If a member of the public has specific concerns regarding students or personnel, those should be brought to the appropriate supervisory personnel or board members privately. Further, persons commenting and members of the audience must remain civil and respectful at all times. Anyone violating these guidelines may be asked to leave the meeting. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Neal. Topic is Magnet and Pay Raise.
Again, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Price, Chairman Gaskins, fellow board members, I'm here tonight just to remind the board in this season of budget and pay raises about the underserved employees that's under the $18 an hour pay raise that's needed to continue affordable living in Georgetown here. I include the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and custodians to mention those. I think it's critical that they learn in livable ways and all for us to have a successful school year and for those to continue to drive and take care of their families as others have the opportunity to do under the school district. Also, I'd like to remind you about the Magnet program that's at the Carvers Bay Middle, Carvers Bay High, Brownsville Elementary, Plansville Elementary, and Pleasant Hill Elementary. Great programs, but I think it's a great need for us to actually have a session plan if one is not in place, that our children will continue to learn. I think it's a great program, but I think we must have a plan that will maintain consistency over the years and stuff that, so our student will continue to learn and grow and stuff healthy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Crawford, itinerant nurse. Ms. Crawford.
I'd like to first thank you guys for allowing me to come up and be heard and the public to also hear me be heard. I'm sure you're aware that we lost the Yesser funding for the itinerant nurse position that we've had over the last three, four years. I'm not even sure how long it's been. We don't have the funding now for that, and I just am pleading with y'all that we need to have an itinerant nurse position. We do not, we do not have nurses at every school. We are losing four nurses this upcoming year, and I think it's very important for us to do our job that we need to have someone that can come in and help do our charting so that the billing goes out appropriately to have that financial aspect come to hit the district like it should. If we have an emergency and we need a nurse to fill in, the itinerant nurse has been able to just pick up on a heartbeat and come in and fill in like it was her school. I don't know if you realize how busy the nurses are, but Kensington, I have 520 children. I have five diabetics that are all under the third grade level. I have a two-feed child that comes in, and I truly need to have help a lot of times because I see 50, 60 kids there a day. That's more than a doctor's office sees with help, and I'm there by myself. So if we have an emergency somewhere on the playground, and I've got a diabetic that's got a blood sugar that's too high or that's too low, there are days that we need to have somebody like that available to be able to rush over to the school to help out. We just don't have that, and I think it's very, very important that y'all consider that. It's been an LPN position in the past. It costs a whole lot less than a nurse's position and a whole lot, that salary is even less than what some of the teachers, we're making less money than the teachers are making. Not complaining, but I just think that it's really relevant that the emphasis needs to be put out there, and I know you've heard about it, probably, not from me. That's why I'm here tonight, but I think that it's very important that that aspect needs to be very truly in your hearts considered for us to be able to do our jobs. The billing, all of that stuff, it's truly an asset to have somebody like that available to come help us. I have days, I tell you, that I can't really get through a lot of days without having something like that, somebody like that at that skill level to be available to come in. So please consider that when you're, I know you've got a lot of requests, but we are, there's only 20 schools and there's 20 of us, or 19 of us, because we have Howard's not covered, but I think it's really important that we have this truly in your passion to see that this helps us get our jobs done. We don't just have a classroom, we have a whole school and staff to take care of. So please think about it very hard as you're looking at the budget to get us the itinerant position budgeted. We really need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crawford. We do recognize all the hard work that our nurses do. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the approval of our minutes. Each of you have received copies of our minutes, and is there a motion to approve our minutes?
Some move.
It's been moved?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our agenda has been approved. Now, we're going to move into information items. First up will be Mr. Hillman, Georgetown Middle School, quarter report to the board. Thank you so much, Mr. Hillman, for being here. We appreciate all the hard work that you do.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Board, Mr. Price, Dr. Giles, Dr. Tutt. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening. When Georgetown Middle School started this year, our overall theme was engagement, and this is before we received our school report card. We knew before the report card came out that for students to learn, they needed to be engaged. So our professional development focused a lot on student discourse, and our teachers went wholeheartedly into it. Then the school report card came out, and we kind of had to shift gears, where student engagement was still at the forefront, but now we had to talk about hard work, perseverance, and determination, and getting our students and staff on board to understand what was at stake. Now, the first couple of slides are pretty much the same as they were at the 30, 16, 90 mark. This April, no, I'm sorry, this past February, we then had a professional development on small group instruction, because we knew with the skill gaps that our students had and with the interventionist only being able to see so many students that our teachers really had to engage our students in small group and understanding small group. At the middle school level, small groups are not common, or they weren't common, but they're now common at Georgetown Middle School, and we have seen the fruits of our labor. If you look at, oh, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead. Next one, keep going. So that is our winter breakdown. Now, when we, that's for reading, for all grade levels. The top one is grade seven, the farthest one to the right is grade six, and then the bottom one is grade eight. That was our winter marks, which were substantially higher than our beginning of the year marks. Next slide, please. That is our reading now at Georgetown Middle through I Ready. That's grade eight on top, grade seven and grade six. And if you look at the Y-axis compared to the first slide, the one before it, we had to increase the number because our students have grown that much. We have seen that much growth at Georgetown Middle School. If you look at our math scores for the winter, you'll see our students were eighth grade on top again, seven in the middle, grade six, and now we go, and the numbers also increased on the Y-axis because it couldn't fit in anymore. That's how much our students have grown this year, according to I Ready. Now, I can't tell you what the SC Ready scores are going to say. I can tell you that our students and our staff, and that's in our entire staff, from the bus drivers to the cafeteria, to the front office, to the custodians, to the teachers, every one of them have worked hard to get our students to where we knew they can be. We knew that our students were capable of more than what they were giving, and I am proud, no matter what the report card says come September of October, of the job that our staff and our students have done. And that is our report for 90 days. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, I'm going to call up Ms. Thompson, who is going to take us through some review of board policies, items two through eight on our agenda. Hopefully, we can move through these pretty quickly. I think they're pretty straightforward.
I hope so. I think they are. Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Members of the Board, Mr. Price. The first policy that we have for review tonight is IB, and that's Academic Freedom. This policy talks about the concept that public schools are a place for children to learn, kind of the principles of American democracy, and to learn to listen to all sides of controversial issue, and that those issues have to be presented in neutral and unbiased fashion. This is a huge kind of philosophical topic to cover in just one short page, and you'll see that this was issued in 1996. This remains the School Boards Association model policy as they have theirs written. Theirs has not changed since that time period either. We, as administration, are not recommending any changes to this one tonight. It is, like I said, a pretty needy topic, but I think it's well-written and has been working for us as we've been using it currently.
Any comments?
Okay, all right, keep it moving. All right, the next one, Policy ICA, the school year calendar. We revised this one just a little bit over a year ago, and as such, we have no current revisions to recommend at this time. All right.
You're doing really good.
Okay, great. I can talk fast, I got this. Policy ICFB Charter Schools, we are recommending to essentially revamp all of the wording of the policy itself so that it encompasses a little bit more of what the regulations and statutes say right now, but then the next two topics would be the administrative rule and the exhibit, and we're recommending striking those. Because we're putting in some of the information from the administrative rule and the exhibit into the policy, and then some of the information that's contained in the rule and the exhibit are now out of date. The statute and regs have been updated since then, and so it kind of just makes more sense to update the language of the policy and strike the rule and the exhibit, which is the application for a charter school. So that's the next three as a lump.
Any questions, thoughts?
Okay, so that was all three of the charter school, policy, administrative rule, and exhibit. The next one is Policy ID for school day. On this one, we're recommending the update, which has been included in the statute, where it states in that top paragraph, "State laws and regulations require that the length of the instructional day for secondary students be at least six hours a day," and then they added that phrase, "or its equivalent weekly," excluding lunch. And then for elementary and middle school students, six hours a day, adding the language, "or its equivalent weekly," including lunch. So the change to the statute was that its equivalent, its equivalent weekly, basically, was what we added in there. Also, adding in the phrase that the number of hours in a school day can vary at the board's discretion, and they don't have to be uniform among the schools, and we have had a little bit of, you know, some shift in that over the years. But the district must consult with parents and faculty to obtain board approval before varying the length of a school day. Then we're striking the last sentence about deliveries, commercial deliveries to students. I don't believe that that's been a significant issue. Perhaps my colleagues may have some different input on that, maybe at the high school level, but I'm not aware of that being such a large interruption to our school day that it needs to be in the policy. to be in the policy. And then the last part, of course, is that moment of silence piece, just to make sure that we have in there that we will have a minute of mandatory moment of silence each day. And that's up.
Okay. You're doing really well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next one is Policy IFB, Curriculum Pilot Projects. And you'll see this one was originally issued in 1976, updated in 1996. The regulation that this was based upon has since been rescinded by the state legislature and the state school boards, excuse me, the State Board of Education. So there is no corresponding regulation at this point that would match this. Our schools certainly still engage in innovative and new plans and projects every year, but they don't necessarily abide by this outdated wording from basically the 1970s. So we're not discouraging any sort of innovative and fresh ideas, but we are not saying that we have to abide by getting board approval and all kinds of things. So the recommendation would be to rescind that as the reg that it's based on has also been rescinded.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think that was it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Vershet, 135-day, 135th-day enrollment report.
Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Superintendent Price, members of the board, members of Cabinet, and our guests. This evening, I would like to present to you an overview of our 135-day counts as well as projected enrollment for the 24, 25 school year. The tables I will present tonight represent each of the four main attendance zones in Georgetown County School District, Andrews, Carvers Bay, Georgetown, and Waukamaw. Each area represented will show the following column headers from left to right. The first column header is the 2024-25 projected. This is a representation of the projected total student enrollment, essentially a roll-up of our current grade levels. So for example, this year's fourth grade class would equal next year's 24, 25, fifth grade class. In these counts, we did take into consideration any graduating juniors, and they were removed from the 12th grade counts. Additionally, the only other grade level that we couldn't use this formula for was our kindergarten students. So this grade level was carried over from this year's 135-day counts. The next two columns, the 2023-24 actual and the 2022-23 actual, these are our student counts in kindergarten through 12th grade from each of the corresponding year's 135 days. The next two columns are the projected changes 2024-23 and enrollment changes 2023 compared to 2022. And these numbers are comparisons showing either the increase or decrease in student enrollment for the corresponding years. These are broken down by school as well as total for the areas. So in looking at the Andrews area schools, in 2023, we had an overall decline in enrollment for the area of 56 total students. Based on the projections, it appears that we are anticipating an increase of 21 students in the area. The increase in projected student enrollment at Andrews High School is due to the larger current eighth grade class at Rosemary Middle School than the current 12th grade class at Andrews High School. The increase in enrollment at Rosemary Middle School is due to the larger incoming sixth grade class than the current eighth grade class. Next, the Carvers Bay area schools. In 2023, there was an increase in total student enrollment by roughly eight students. Based on the projections, it appears that we are anticipating a decrease of 26 students for the 24, 25 school year. The projected incoming sixth grade class for Carvers Bay Middle Steam Academy is less than the current eighth grade class. For Pleasant Hill Elementary Stream Academy, their current fifth grade class is much larger than their current kindergarten class. Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School has a smaller current 12th grade class than the current eighth grade class at Carvers Bay Middle Stream Academy. And I'm sorry, Carvers Bay Middle Steam Academy. Next, Georgetown area schools. The Georgetown area also showed a decrease in overall enrollment from 22 compared to 23. The good news is that they're projected to increase in overall enrollment for 24, 25. The largest projected difference is due to Georgetown Middle School's current eighth grade class. It's much larger than the combined Georgetown High School current 12th grade class in graduating Next, in the Waukamaw area schools, this area also increased in overall enrollment from 22 compared to 23. Based on the projections, it appears that we're anticipating a decrease of 75 students from this year to next. The largest impact appears to be at Waukamaw Intermediate School, where their current sixth grade class has 156 students, and their projected incoming fourth grade class has 103 students. Waukamaw Middle School has a larger current eighth grade population than anticipated seventh grade enrollment for 2024. And Waukamaw High School's current senior class is much larger than the projected ninth grade class for 2024. Coastal Montessori Charter School also showed an increase in enrollment in 2023 compared to the previous year. They've reported that they're expecting 250 students for the 24, 25 school year based off of the current enrollment and pre-registration paperwork. That would mean an overall increase of 15 students from 23 to 24. Overall, in Georgetown County School District, we show decreases in enrollment from 22 to 23 of 91 students when comparing the two years. This trend matches the same thing that we saw during our 45 comparisons from the same years. Based on our 2024 projections, we're anticipating a slight decrease overall of roughly eight And I'd like to wrap up tonight's, my part of tonight's presentation with a bright spot. Currently, our student registration submissions are well ahead of where they were at this time last year. Our clerk schools in school district have done a great job of continuing to communicate, encourage, and support our families with the registration process. Our families have also done an excellent job of going online to complete the process. We currently have over 96% of our families with a parent portal account, which will make this process much easier, and we expect for these numbers to continue to increase before the end of the school year. We'll continue to support our Georgetown County School District families and remind them that we want you back. And as I conclude my portion of tonight's presentation, are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaskins, Chairman Gaskins, excuse me, board members, and Mr. Price. Brent and I are going to take over the next part of the presentation and talk about our positions, teaching positions, and allocations. This is just a summary page for 23, 24 of the 135th day. The enrollments match what Mark just shared with you. Our district formula calls for 400 local teachers. We have 406, so right now we're six over local teachers. A lot of that has to do with small schools that we're not, we're unable to handle any reductions in. We have Title I that has 18 positions. Title II has one teaching position. We currently, for 23, 24, have 18.7 interventionists funded in ESAR and one reading coach. So altogether, excuse me, we are 25.7 positions over. Now, you all have already voted to take care of the interventionists, so those will be coming into local, and I'll go through that as we go through the next slides. Our Andrews area, our local formula, Andrews Elementary calls for 29. They currently have 30. We have taken care of one of those through attrition. And the other, the two interventionists, one will be picked up by local funding. The other person has been, has been taken care of through attrition. So you can see that each of the schools are like, the Andrews High is one over, and we reduced that by one local. Rosemary Middle is also over by one local, and we've been able to recoup that, and we're adding a position at Sampit for their numbers. They've got additional enrollment that requires for them to have another teacher. Carvers Bay area, Brown's Ferry is, has seven, the formula calls for seven, so they're fine. The interventionist will be pulled into local. Carvers Bay High would be, they're fine too. They have 24 local teachers, and that's what their formula calls for. The interventionist has been handled through attrition because we did not include those in the, the high schools are not included in the funding. Carvers Bay Middle is over by one position, and at this time, it's still pending. They're one of the small schools we were talking about that are hard to schedule without sufficient staff. Plantersville, same thing, small school, the interventionist, .7 will come into local. And Pleasant Hill Elementary is currently one over, but we are also, that one is also pending, waiting to check the numbers a little bit closer to school starting. Georgetown area positions, Georgetown High, they are over by one. So we have managed, we've taken care of that as well as their interventionist has been absorbed. Georgetown Middle is good. The interventionist will be moved into local. Kensington is fine, and their interventionist will be moved into local. Maryville is gaining a teacher based on additional enrollment at her school, and the interventionist will be moved into local. And McDonald right now is one over allocated, and that one is pending as well right now. Waukamaw, Waukamaw Elementary is going to gain two teachers based on enrollment, and the interventionist will be moving into local. Waukamaw High is fine with their local allocation, and the interventionist has been absorbed. Waukamaw Intermediate is currently one over, and that one is pending, waiting to see what registrations looks like in the next month or so. And Waukamaw Middle is also one over, and we have at this point been able to recoup that one. So if you look at the overall area, we, we have been able to take care of the interventionist ESAR-funded, and the reading coach is in the budget to be considered. So those 19.7 positions have been absorbed, and that leaves us with six over. We added one to the budget after we, you'll see when, as we get to it, that we netted out the local teachers we were able to recoup and the ones we needed to add for enrollment, and ended up with a plus one at that point, at this point, for, for the budget to be considered Did you have any questions about how we do any of this or how the numbers came out?
Thank you for that information. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I think you're up next, too.
Yes, sir. You're going to be sick of me shortly. Okay. The financial report, quarter three. You should have gotten that in your packets. We are on target, basically where we were at this time last year. We were 98% collected at the local, for local revenues last year, and we're 97% this year. I have mentioned along the way that the tax revenues, the bills went out a little bit late, so we are still collecting. Overall, though, we were at 84% collected last year at this time, and we're at 84% collected this year overall. So a lot of that has to do with the timing of state payments and the property tax reimbursements that go to the treasurer's office before they come to us. So out of the total revenues, we've collected 90.8 million. For the salaries and related fringes, we are at .71% of our budget, which is about three-fourths, and that's about where we needed to be and where we were last year. Overall, we are 71% spent, and part of that is due to the teacher payrolls that we run for July. It used to be July and August. Now, we just have the two July payrolls that we run. So we are on target for our expenditures as well. Any questions on the report?
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the request to change pay dates. Policy says that we pay on the 15th and the 30th, or if that falls on a weekend, the Friday before or the day before. These are the dates that don't coincide with the policy, either because of holidays or the summer schedule where the district office is closed on Fridays. So this is a pretty standard practice that we do every year. Do you have any question about the dates or concerns?
Looks good. Thank you. Nail the budget.
Yes. All right. We do have a draft general fund budget to discuss with you tonight. We've been able to better project state and local revenues as well as our expenditures with, with more data that we have now today. The House Two budget restored the state aid to classrooms funding of 230 million rather than going with the Senate version of 200 million. It's pretty much a given that we will not pass our budget before we, I mean, we will need to pass our budget before we know what our funding will be. The Board of Economic Advisers increased their 23 and 24 and 24, 25 projections, so there is new money that could be considered. Well, hopefully, they could appropriate some of that. It is expected that by June, somewhere around June 18th, before we'll know exactly what's going to happen with our funding. The, the next one is just your, just a reminder of your board priorities from your December retreat, and we have tried very hard to prioritize the requests based on, on what your priorities The next is a summary of the proposed state and local revenues plus a figure of $2 million for fund balance to, to balance the budget. It has changed slightly, and I'll go through those changes when we get to those pages. The next page is the mandated increases. The increased teacher salary of $2,500, that will be on every step of the teacher salary. The teacher step, somewhere between 1.5% to 2% average. The bus driver increase will take the bus drivers to 17.91 an hour beginning, and the bus driver step for the year's experience is included. The group health, we were able to go back and revise that projection, so now it's 1.4 million, which is much, much better looking than what we had previously. The additional mandated increases, the charter school additional allocation is just a projection, but when our revenues go up and their numbers go up, their allocation increases. So we've tried to allow money for that. Contracted services increase 100,000. We were able to take out the increase in workers' comp and property casualty insurance, the 100,000 that we had there. Workers' comp went down by 100,000, and property casualty went up by 100,000, so we were able to net to zero.
Good.
Increase in financial audit fees with the new audit firm. We're just not real certain yet what that might look like after tonight. I might have a better idea. Utilities cost increase, security costs for SROs, the ones that are hourly and contracted and not grant-funded, 150,000. And then some required special ed, special services, teachers, pair pros, and an occupational These are the two items that you've actually have voted to fund, whether it's in the budget or out of fund balance. So we've, we've got those in there. It's actually 13.7 FTEs there, rounded to 14. The district practice- The district practice increases, we, we took out the nurse step that was, would be if they stayed on the same scale they're on now and just took that out and moved up the nurse increase on the new scale to be included up here. That was just trying to work through some of the things we've heard from you guys and from, from internally. So we've included that there. That would take a BSN, brand new, to 42,000. And then everything else is the same that you, as you saw last time. The step for administrators, step for classified, increase the hourly rate, the $10 that we're currently paying out of ESER for after-school work, homebound work, that's got to be picked up locally. The Walkham Middle School reading coach, the custodian at Carvis Bay High and the salaries for the Walkham High School R, junior ROTC. Department and school requests, the 3.5% for classified scales would take the hourly rate lowest to 14.49. The admin scale increase would be 2% on the current scales. We haven't, the autism class, paraprofessional and halftime ABA would have two, one full-time of each. The additional days for ag would make them 240. And we hope to get more funding from Clemson if, but that all is going to depend on what the legislators do. We've got the instructional coaches, five days, the webmaster stipend, just as you saw it last time, and then the temporary rates in the other areas that need to be included, the high school bookkeeper supplement for additional time required by athletics and the strength and conditioning supplement at Walkham Middle Schools, since they're not physically located close to the high school where the kids could go and do their strength and conditioning. The next slide is the, are the three items that you all asked to be brought back and put separate and that is the Sampit additional interventionist, the Kensington math interventionist, and it should say halftime assistant principal at Brown's Ferry. So those are the requests that you all brought back. The next slide are the items that we've not recommended this year to be funded in 24, 25. Not that they're not important or necessary, but we just had to prioritize what we needed, what we thought was the most important things. And the items funded through reallocation and other funding sources, that is the same that you saw before. We're using grant funding, capital funding, ESER, closeout funding, I think, and reallocating some positions to take care of all of those. And the next page is just a summary of everything we just talked about, showing that we have 6.8 million in new revenue, 8.4 million in requests before school and department requests, and then another 1.3 from schools and departments. So the expenditures over revenue, if everything is approved, and that it does include the three items that you all requested, would be 2.8 short. We have adjusted the value of a mill based on the current collection rate and some, they included some growth and then we've also included growth for next year. Checked with the county and kind of went with what they're using as a growth factor. So it's 405,000 now. I think we said 390 last meeting. It does apply to the second homes and rental houses and businesses. The next page shows you where you would have millage available, should you choose to use it fiscal year '25. We're at 121.1 and you could go up 7.1. You also have carry, lookback millage for '24 and '23 that you could use if you needed to. We did use some of it, but there is still some available. And now we'll get into your options. Option number one is no millage increase, just using the 6.8 million new dollars that we think we have coming in. And that would include, if you go to page 19, it gives you a better picture of what that includes. That includes the mandated salary and fringes, the mandated other increases, the board priorities that you've already approved, that would get them in the budget, and increase in teacher growth and nurse increase on the new scale and step for administrators. And that would cover those items with about 22,000, $23,000 left. That's option one. Option two would be to increase mills by 3.2 and that would cover everything we just talked about in option one and also cover, and I think it's, if you go to page 22, it gives you a better representation of what, what's covered. Option two would cover the district practice historical increases as well as everything in option one. Option three would cover everything in one, two, one and two, as well as the school and department requests. So if you'll go to 25, that will show you that that would cover all of that plus leave a balance of about 21,000 in additional revenue. And option four would be everything, including the option one, two, three and the additional three items that the board requested. It takes 6.5 mills to do that. Can I answer questions?
Ms. Johnson, the $2,500 raise that all teachers receive, our administrators do not receive any of that.
No, ma'am.
They would just get a step if we don't increase their salary scale at all.
Right.
And I'm concerned about that in that our administrative salaries are not quite as competitive as they once were with the surrounding counties around us. I know that our teachers certainly, I am a real proponent for that, but I am concerned that our starting and, and our increased salary schedule for our administrators without a raise at all, I, I just have a concern there. So how much millage in option two would that, would that increase?
Brent's got his spreadsheet and he can recalculate that right now.
Or you can let us know. I, I just am concerned about that in that I realize they're going to get a step, that they, the competitiveness of our administrative salaries.
I agree.
Are.
They're not where they should be.
Not where they should be. And, and I'm, I'm, I want all of our people to have money, but I am concerned about the, the competitiveness of that and, and the needs that we might have coming forward.
Want to move it up? Is that your?
Move it into option two, add it to option two.
Add it to option two.
Yes, ma'am. Because we're at, I guess as I look at it, I, I would like to do everything on this budget. I'd like to see us be able to add everything, but I am very concerned about the competitiveness of, of that particular.
Same here.
Salary across the board.
Because I, I'm in favor of option two, if we could get the administrative salary increase.
And just add a minimal number of mills to that. I think the other thing is, is, is we have gone, we went such a very long time, I'd like for our public to really know that. We went a lot of years that we never added mills. And when you go for a very long time and never add any millage, we've had the lowest millage all around forever and ever. And when you go there, I'm not about taxes, but I am about competitive programs and we don't want to lose our children and we don't want to be non-competitive with the surrounding districts.
Absolutely.
And when we went all those years without any raises in millage, then all of a sudden we were very far behind. And when you see districts around us adding $7,500 to teacher contracts and you see starting salaries for administrators much higher than ours, it's concerning to me that, that we really have to be looking at what are we getting for the amount of money we're spending? And I don't see us frivolously spending our money. I see us being very cautious with our money, but I do see a need to be competitive with all those districts around us.
Absolutely.
I would like to say, I'd like for us to, I want everybody to get paid, but I want some of this money to hit the classrooms because the interventionist positions that are being asked for, that's a direct effect on our kids. So adding the millage to option number two, I would love to see us just look at option number, what was the last option there?
Three or four?
Four. Yes. I want everything, I want everything that the teachers are asking us for that the kids need. I understand the, we want to be competitive for our administrators, but hey, we're losing teachers all the time also because we're not competitive in that area either. But like I said, my main focus is going to be what is it that the teachers are, and the principals are telling us that they need in the classroom?
With that said, could, I need to point out something to make sure we have a clear understanding. Mr. Street, could you pull up slide number 27? I believe this was the, the slide you were referring to, Mr. Moore, with the additional interventionist?
Yes, sir.
So right now, we have an interventionist in the budget for every elementary school. And then we have several of our schools who are Title I schools and many of those schools use their Title I funds to get a second interventionist. In this slide, you have one school that's a Title I school, Sampit, and one school that is not a Title I school, Kensington, who is asking for a second interventionist. If we were to do that, then we would branch over into the realm of supplanting. You cannot use local public funds to supplant what Title I is being used to provide. So right now, the district provides an interventionist to everyone. If the district starts providing second interventionists to some schools, the federal government will say, well, obviously you don't need Title I funds to do that, so you can't use Title I to cover any of your interventionists if you're going to start covering it for some. So we have to be, and Ms. Smith is in the audience and, and we've had this discussion just to make sure that we're clear, but if we start doing that, we're going to get ourselves into some trouble. And so if, if adding a second interventionist to every elementary school is something that the board is interested in doing, my recommendation would be to wait and do that strategically in the years to come. This year, we're getting one interventionist there. Our schools who receive Title I funds have the option and the ability to use those funds to add a second interventionist. And when we get to a point where we're ready to add a second interventionist, that we do it across the board so that Title I funds will not be relied upon. I hope that makes sense. And Ms. Smith is, is available if, if I'd muddied the waters on that, Ms. Smith, you can step up and help clarify.
And it does, but what I want to do is just stay out of trouble and also get what our kids need most.
I understand that completely.
You know, my concern about adding these interventionist positions, if we did it for those schools, we would need to do it for all schools.
Oh, they would all line up and say we'll take a second one too.
Yes.
We would have to.
We would have to.
Because we couldn't do that without being in the supplant problem.
Correct. So that, that's why I could not go for option four.
If I could, if I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. Street, if you could now pull up slide number 24. And so based on the discussion that, that I've heard up to this point, if option two is the, is, is one direction that I hear we're, we're moving towards, that would mean that plus the second item here, administrative scale increase, that would mean that every other item on this page would not be approved for the upcoming year. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear with everyone.
We, but we could add.
You could. You could take option two and pick out.
Add that money to that and add point something of a mill.
To pick up admin scale.
To pay for that admin. That's what I was requesting, that we look at option two, but we also look at the addition of that money. Or maybe it'll come when we get the new budget, you know, June, the 18th or whatever, but I'm in favor of option two with the addition.
Of that.
Of that item into an additional amount of money for that particular. It's sad that we can't add all those extra perks. I mean, it's really sad, I think, but I also think it's very difficult not to, to value the leadership in our schools.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How do you, what would happen with, we're still on this page, with special services autism class? I know that the autism class, autism classes at a couple of the elementary schools are growing and we're projecting that growth, which is why we needed the additional paraprofessional. So if we don't have that, I feel like that's going to be a deficit to those, to that service.
We would continue to operate as is. Right now, we've got a position that split half-time for each of those, where the person is half, half-time para and half-time ABA. And the request was to round that out to a whole FTE so that you could have a full-time para and a full-time ABA. If not, we would have to continue serving the same, if not more, students with current staffing.
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be a lot of, putting a lot of pressure and stress on the current staff and I don't know that they would be able to adequately, you don't want to adequately, just adequately serve special students, you want to be able to serve them fully. So I would really like to see that move.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
As well. Is there a comparison available of the millage rates in the surrounding counties compared with Georgetown? And how much, I guess, and how much a mill in those various counties raises compared to a mill in our county? I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yes, sir, there is. I'm not sure how real time it is, but there is, I can't, we can get that for you. It's either on the county auditor's website for the state or it's, it's available though. We can get that for you.
I would appreciate that. I'd like to, I'd like to see that because I gather a mill, one mill increase in Georgetown County doesn't equate necessarily to one mill increase in, say, Ory County in terms of dollars.
That's correct.
Ory County will raise a lot more money. Is that correct?
Be much lower.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm hearing too is that we're, we're interested in option two, but moving the, add, add the admin scale increase and the special services for autism class. Is there any other priority?
I'm certainly interested, like I said, the Carvis Bay, Georgetown High, additional 20-day for the AG science teacher position. I've been hearing a lot about why that is necessary and I just feel like things like that should be considered over admin scale increase. That's just my personal opinion.
Excuse me, I guess a question would be, has the admin been getting a step increase in pay?
Yeah.
Is it something that we hadn't been doing or, or we've just been leaving them out? We hadn't been leaving them out, right? So this would probably be the first time. Because I think if I understand, Mr. Moore, I think he's feeling, thinking that the admin constantly gets a step increase, but they probably don't.
For the past three, at least the past three years, we've given a, some percentage of increase to every employee.
Okay.
Certified and classified. Certified and classified. So, if the items that you see on this page, if they are anything that references salary or pay on this page not approved, then they wouldn't, this would be the first year in four years that they haven't gotten that. They'd still get a step, but they wouldn't get a percentage increase to their pay scale. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay.
So, going back to what Mr. Moore said, yeah, I'm in favor of our classroom people being taken care of. And if we could, you know, move forward with that. And then again, we can't go into federal funding with a Title I. So, I guess we got to be careful in how we deal with that as well. So, I was really concerned about what do we normally do with admin as far as getting a pay increase.
Yes, sir, they-
I don't think they ought to be stuck forever as well.
We, Mr. Jenkins and his team reworked that salary scale a few years ago. They were stuck at a specific level. And we changed that to give them a step increase every year, just like teachers get. Prior to just a few years ago, that was not the case. And so, we have done that. And so, higher up in the priorities, you will see a step increase for administrators, but that doesn't change their scales, just like teachers are getting a step increase for next year, plus the $2,500 mandatory increase.
Right.
There is no mandatory increase for administrators.
Right.
But I would just want to re-echo what Ms. Hamel was saying with our admin. We are low compared to our surrounding districts. If we're going to attract good administrators when jobs are opening or be able to keep our administrators in Georgetown County, we need to take a serious look. You know, you know, 2%? That's an increase. I don't know if we can do more this year. 4%? I don't know what that would cost us with a 4%. But if, but at some point in our budget, whether it's this year or next year, we'd need to really take a strong look at admin pay in order to keep the administrators that we have and be able to attract administrators from other places.
When assistant administrators make as much as some of our administrators from surrounding districts make the same amount of money, it's very difficult then, and our assistant administrators then don't make what they do other places. And it's a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day job in our schools, especially in our high schools. And I just, I can't say enough that I still believe that in order to have good leaders and in order to have good teachers, you have to pay them. And we're doing, I think we have to look very seriously at all of this.
Mr. Street has been working on this along with Ms. Johnson, and he has a spreadsheet in front of him. And so, Mr. Street, I'm going to put you on the spot. You may not have the answer to this question. But do you have the millage impact for the admin scale increase by 2%?
Moving it into option two?
If we did that, what would, how many, what was the?
Move to 3.8 mills.
What was the value of that item? Just that item?
0.6 mills.
0.6. So, that would be a 0.6 increase to include the admin scale increase by 2%. What is the millage increase, increase value for the para-pro plus ABA position for special services? Okay, 0.11. And for the ag teachers? 0.05. And I believe those were the three specific items that were mentioned. So, to add those three items to option two, it would be an increase of 0.76 mills over option two. If my math is correct.
Ms. Johnson, remind us, what is our timeline in moving forward with the budget? What's?
From whenever you all give us what you want us to do, I have to advertise for 15 calendar days. And then, we would need to have the public hearing and adoption. So, it doesn't work to do between this, you know, a June meeting and the next June meeting. I think we're going to have to have an extra meeting in there because
Extra meeting?
It's not 15 days.
Okay.
So, quick math, that would mean the total millage increase would need to be 3.96, rounded up to four mills increase to do all of option two, plus the three items that were mentioned. There's no vote required tonight. I'm just presenting this as information. We'll be bringing it back to you soon for a first vote.
I do want to just make sure that the 3.5% increase for classified scales, it doesn't have to be 3.5%. That was just a starting point. But if you, if nothing, if that doesn't, that's a part of option three. If that's not included, the only increase for classified is a step. Just want to make sure.
On slide 24, the number one item.
Oh, yeah, we've got to include that.
So, that's their only increase, other than a step, if we don't increase that?
Correct.
And Brent said that's 5.4 mills.
That item.
No, to include what you've talked about, plus that.
Okay.
That's 5.4.
Yeah, we will have to, we have to include that.
Yeah. If that's the only increase for those folks, then yes.
Yes, we got to do that.
Yeah. And what would that bring, the starting salary, or is it prorated by job?
It's prorated by job, but it would make the lowest hourly rate 1449.
1449?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, it's 14 flat.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
And that would impact every sale in the-
Every sale going up.
That's correct. For all employees at all steps and all number of years.
Now, if you would like for us to look at a different percentage, we could do that. This was just a start.
We can absorb it, I think it's good.
So, if it's 5.4, and then if we accepted everything in option three, it's 5.9. So, that's only a three, okay. And that would include?
You can see the two largest items on slide 24 are the first two. The classified and the admin.
So-
Everything else?
Yes.
Maybe we should consider option three.
Maybe we should consider option three and-
Any other thoughts from anybody?
I don't know how we're going to keep, I guess the, I think that the five instructional days, I see all those things on there as so important. And it's, the bulk of the money would be included in those two items in the raise.
Yep. Okay. If you'll bring option three back to us.
Yes, sir. And we'll, we'll continue to fine-tune and look for savings and hopefully be able to-
All right, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Get that down.
All right.
And I'll say, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, but after the first presentation and the first numbers we ran, to get to option three would have been over a 12-mill increase.
It was. The first figures we, we were looking at.
But we're down now to under six. So, it's moving in the right direction with the potential. In order to include everything on slide 24, may not require that much. So, fingers crossed.
Okay, fingers are crossed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, a bench.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams is sick, so you still got me.
Okay, good, excellent.
She, yeah, she was unable to be here tonight. But she and a committee composed of the district staff and school staff have worked very hard to find architects to do the capital projects that you all have in the plan and have allocated monies for. So, she did a notice of intent to award to four firms, Greenberg Pharoah, McMillan, Pasden Smith, Mosley Architects, and Little Diversified Architectural slash Consulting Incorporated. And all four of them would be used over a two-year period for whatever projects that need an architect or an engineer. So, we are ready to roll with these projects, with this new, these new architects and engineers. Do you have any questions? I think she sent a packet of all the details.
Looks good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a discussion about cellphone use. There's been some conversation about this and we are, there's going to be a proviso in the budget, which all of you received a copy of, proviso, cellphone proviso 2024, basically eliminating the use of cellphones by students during class time. And if you look at both of our policies, on cellphone use, policy JND-R and policy JF, student rights and responsibilities, we have it covered.
Yes, we do.
We have it covered. So, the question is about, which I think we should leave up to the district administration of schools, is how that is enforced.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, I hear that way it's being enforced now, it's sort of, you know, just hearsay. It's sort of, different schools do it differently in how it's enforced.
Yes.
And what I think as a board, what I'm hearing from us, and I'll speak up, is that we're looking for it to be consistent.
Right, yes.
Right.
And I, and I would propose all day.
Pardon?
All day. Not just during class time.
Right.
I'm not really concerned about that, about all day. I'm really concerned about the consistent use. I'm concerned about the teachers feeling comfortable enforcing it in the classroom, knowing that they will get support from the administration if they, if the teachers are enforcing it. I think what is, if a student is at lunch or in a break or has an off period, I have no problems with their checking their phones.
Right. Yeah, I feel the same way. And I think, you know, we need to trust our teachers to, I mean, if this is the policy, but you also need support from administration. If, for example, it's my classroom and I say, okay, we're not, you know, put your cellphones away, we're not going to do it. And if a kid does, and you know, whatever consequences there are, then the administration has to support it. So, and as far as using it at lunchtime and, that doesn't hurt. Might keep them off in the classroom if they can use them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of comments.
Okay.
You know, the bottom line is, is cellphones that are not enforced in the classroom is a big hindrance to students that are trying to learn. And I've read this cellphone policy over 100 times because this is a subject that, that I think is important. And we've got terminology in there about cellphone use. And I'm going to read you three terms remain out of sight. Period. Turned off. Period. Not activated. Period. Unless approved by the teacher for just educational use. Period. Now, I'm with Kathy on lunchtime and on breaks, but I think everything I just read has got to be enforced 110% in every classroom. Because I'm going to tell you right now, it's not being enforced, and cellphones are going crazy in classrooms. And they shouldn't be because of what those things I just read. So, I'm 100% for those items, turn them off in the classroom. It says if you're caught pulling them out, they get confiscated. Your parent comes and picks it up. In a classroom, cellphones need to get under control.
And there have been studies that show that the, you know, having students be able to, students concentrate better when they don't use their cellphones, when they're not constantly hearing the ding of the notifications, which you don't hear if the cellphones are off. And so, you know, there are mental health consequences to that. Cellphone uses are addictive in adults as well as children. And so, I think we would, we are doing our kids a disservice if we don't enforce the policy.
I agree.
I think we support the policy. I just think that there's mounting evidence that having the cellphones in, operating during the day, whether it's lunchtime or during breaks or whatever, is detrimental, that students stop talking to one another. I would like to recommend, because we have a school that has eliminated cellphones all day. And that's Waukesha Middle School. And it's interesting, when I talked to the principal, I said, so this was a new policy? And she said, no. It's always been the policy. In fact, it's in the handbook. And I have a copy of the handbook. And the handbook says, during regular school hours, cellphones, Bluetooth headphones, and other unauthorized devices brought onto the school campus by a student must remain inside their school locker. Now, they, they have lockers, that's. No phones, Bluetooth headphones, or unauthorized devices will be allowed outside of student lockers during the school day. These items will be confiscated and taken to the front office. And they also have consequences for that. First violation, the device will be confiscated, brought to the front office for the remainder of the day. Student may collect the device at dismissal. Second violation, parents will be contacted to pick up the electronic communications device, and the policy will be explained to the parents. Third violation, the electronic communications device will be confiscated by the administration for one week or five school days. This was never enforced. It is now being enforced. And I would like, I would recommend that the next board meeting, that the principal of Waukesha Middle School present to the board what has transformed at Waukesha Middle School since this policy was implemented, because it is pretty amazing. And I think the board should hear from that because I think there are reasons to eliminate it all day. Good reasons. And I think there's a movement, in fact, if I read that proviso that just came out from, the bill is now in the Senate. The House was recommending during class hours. The Senate has changed it to say all day.
Yeah.
And this may, this may be a fait accompli, if that's the way it ends up. But I think regardless, there's value to having it. I don't know what the objection is, and I'm open to listen to, to having it during classrooms, but not having it the rest of the day. I don't know. I think we should hear from, from the principal at Waukesha Middle School.
I think when you're comparing middle schools to high schools, it's more responsibility for high schools as far as, a lot of them got jobs and reasons they may need to use their phone at certain times of the day, not in the classroom. But I think there's a reason that we give the high schools a little more responsibility than we would give a middle school. So, there's a lot of things that probably need to be ironed out there.
Is the, is that the handbook that Waukesha Middle has, is that true in all of our schools' handbook?
No.
No, it's just that school?
And just to point of clarity, it is not a policy, it is a school rule.
School rule.
School rule.
Shouldn't we have consistency throughout the whole district with handbooks?
We have, we have policy that governs that for us. And with these, then policy is enforced consistently. And they, as, if memory serves me correctly, they had this discussion as a faculty because our policy allows at the discretion of the teacher. And as a faculty discussion, they made it pretty much a blanket rule that in our school, this is going to be our discretion to not allow it. And so, the big difference in the two versions of the proviso has to, that conflicts with our current policy. Our current policy reads, limited use of cellphones and or handheld devices in the classroom is permitted at the discretion of the classroom teacher. Regardless of which version passes as a proviso, Regardless of which version passes as a proviso, that part will no longer be allowed.
Correct.
At a minimum, they will no longer be allowed in the classroom.
Correct.
The question is whether or not they will be allowed at lunch, during class change, before school, after school, outside of class time. And so regardless of what happens, our policy is going to have to be amended. And that would give us an opportunity at that time, too, to discuss a uniform, consistent measure of accountability.
Right.
The biggest challenge for any rule is enforcement.
Right.
And if you've ever tried to confiscate cellphones from students, that can become quite the battle. What I do not want to do is to put our teachers in positions where they're having battles.
Right.
But to iron out a clear set of consequences, if it happens, and whatever the response to it is, if there's a failure to comply with that response, we need to be clear and consistent across the board, that if you don't comply with the consequence for not following that rule, this is what happens. So, but what I do not want to see is our folks getting into battles about trying to confiscate cellphones, because that will, that will be pretty challenging.
Go ahead.
The other challenge that I see is all these young people are communicated to by their athletic coaches and after-school activities, especially in the high schools. And parents don't always, I mean, there's no communication link. We would have on the announcements constantly, over and over and over again for changes due to inclement weather, due to all sorts of circumstances. And these kids don't have another avenue of communication between coach and home and the student. I see lots of challenges with never allowing it. I see it being a very positive that we make a certain way of communicating how we are going to keep them from being active in a classroom. But I don't see a way to, unless it's a hardened state rule, for us to not have them at all. I think you talk about challenges, there'd be many challenges because of the communication with who goes home where and who goes to that house and who we communicate the rules to for all these activities. I think we'd have a real hard time.
So who do we need to contact about this proviso?
Your legislators, because right now.
We need to find out.
The Senate has sent theirs back. It's currently in, in House Two, and they've got to iron out the differences before it's time for the vote on the budget.
And so we need to do some work in contacting legislators and our public needs to do some work in contacting our legislators and saying, this is not feasible in a lot of situations. As a classroom teacher, I can control my classroom for that period of time, but if they're going out, they're talking to their coaches, they're doing those sort of things, especially in high school. Jobs, I mean, that's just, it, it just seems very extreme to say they can't use their phone at all during the entire school day.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna agree with.
Classroom is one thing, but in between classes, at lunch, recess, and even if, you know, whatever, if we're doing an activity and we finish five minutes early, I don't have a problem with a kid being on a cellphone.
Yeah.
In that situation. But if you're, if our legislators are sitting there and saying, oh no, we're, you know, micromanaging every classroom in the state, that's a problem.
I guess what my challenge is to Mr. Price and Dr. Giles is to pay attention to which direction this goes.
Oh, rest assured.
Rest assured.
I'm sure they are.
And maybe come back to us with a plan of action. Because we do need consistency in what we already have in our policy.
Yeah, if the state goes with the most extreme, and they could, can a local district opt out or is that state law? We have to follow that statute.
We won't get funds and you don't get funds.
We won't get funds.
Receive state funds allocated for state aid to classrooms.
And I'd like to just close with this comment. I agree with Kathy, I agree with Ms. Patty. Cellphones is a part of our society now. That's the way parents communicate with kids. I think that's awesome. And they can do that on their break and at recess. Put the phones away in the classroom, bottom line.
I would still like and recommend the board here from the principal at Waukesha Middle School in terms, and I'm not disagreeing, there are differences. I would like the board to hear from her about what's happened at the middle school when they eliminated cellphones, because it's been pretty amazing.
We can do that. Thank you very much. We can close this conversation, meet for update on superintendent search. I don't know where Kristy is, if she could bring that calendar up. But all of you have the calendar in front of you. Just want to go through this timeline very quickly. I just want, I think it's self-explanatory, but I want you to draw your eyes to, you know, the search opens June 1st and the online survey starts June 1st. But I want to draw your eyes to July the 11th, 2024. That is our regular scheduled retreat. And because of the work that we're going to do that day, it'll start at 8:30 in the morning, we will get a summary from South Carolina School Board Association, from the focus groups, from the input sessions, and also we will get a presentation of the candidates. So, so we're gonna have to change the title of that meeting. It'll be a special called board meeting at 8:30. We'll meet here in the morning, we'll start a meeting, then we'll go into executive session. So just want to make you aware of that day, because that is our regular scheduled school board meeting. Then if you see August 12th through 14th, hopefully we'll have anywhere from seven to nine candidates. And that's a Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And I like to, it'll be a special called board meeting, we'll start at five o'clock if we can. And hopefully we will take care of everybody and we, interviews will last about 45 minutes to an hour, but no longer than that. Then we'll do semifinalists. I, yeah, then we'll, then hopefully on August the 20th, we'll announce finalists, our three finalists. Then September 16th through the 18th, we will do our, our finalist candidates, we'll invite them to the district on that day. And we'll invite them, give them a tour of the district. We will have a meet and greet that evening, followed by a special called board meeting for the interview. Also do note, September the 17th would be our normally scheduled board meeting. We will not have our regular board meeting on the 17th, since we've got a lot going on. And hopefully by October the 1st or the 8th, we can announce a superintendent. So that, that is the plan. The other thing I wanted to bring to you as information, sitting down, talking with Mr. Price and Dr. Giles about Dr. Giles coming, taking over as our interim superintendent. She is technically, will have two positions that she is, will be handling. And I know that she is a very talented lady, but I'm not sure she, she's gonna need a little bit of help. What I'll, at the next board meeting, I'm gonna bring a recommendation to you, that she be able to hire part-time, a retired administrator, that she can delegate some of her responsibilities, especially in her role as deputy superintendent.
Makes sense.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I think it is too. But at the next board meeting, we will, we will take a vote and we'll give Dr. Giles the lead way to make that hire.
Sounds good.
Is there any other questions about the search? And you know, the input sessions start tomorrow. You'll, bus drivers at 10 o'clock, students at 11:30. At 2 o'clock, we'll meet with classified and support staff. And 4 o'clock with teacher forum members. So it all begins tomorrow.
I just want to say, I hope that with these input sessions that we have, that people come out and people share. I think historically at other districts, we've heard that you could have, especially with the community focus groups, they've had as little as five people and, and other places they've had up to 40. I hope that in Georgetown County, that we have a lot of interest in the superintendent search and that we have, this is your opportunity to come and share your qualifications, what you would like to see in a school superintendent. So I think people should take full advantage of it. So I hope that people do.
And I would like to assure the public that the board is gonna take this information to heart. We will use that information as we, when we look at our candidates, as we develop questions to ask, the question, we will use this information to build a profile for a perfect superintendent for Georgetown County. So that is our goal. Is there any other questions? Yes.
I'd like to see the public use the online surveys as well.
Yes, yes. That will be promoted heavily.
Please, please, please respond to the online survey.
Kristy will be pushing that survey link out, I'm sure, starting June 1st, and hopefully emails to all of our teachers and just getting it out of the public. Maybe we can do an ad in the Coastal Observer or maybe get Gab News to push it out.
Posting Courier.
Posting Courier, too, yes. Sorry about that.
One last thing, I did like the idea about getting support for Dr. Giles, to make sure that she gets the support, starting here at the board, with whoever you bring in, and any administrators that's working along with her. We don't ever want to put somebody in a position to fail. So I like that idea, that we bring somebody on to.
And we'll give Dr. Giles that latitude and we'll vote on that at our next board meeting. All right, moving on, I think there's one more of our board meeting dates.
That's me.
That's Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I bring to you the slate of meeting dates for the 24-25 school year. You can see at the beginning that July 11th has been changed from a board retreat date to the special called meeting to review superintendent applications. Traditionally have one meeting in July, then the two meetings in August, August 6th and 20th, along with the special called meetings for round one interviews. Then one meeting only in September because of the finalist interviews scheduled for the third Tuesday of the month. So one board meeting in September and then three special called meetings for finalist interviews. Then we kind of get into a traditional rotation. Two meetings in October, one meeting in November due to Thanksgiving break. November 19th will be a special called meeting to do our installation ceremony for any new or returning board members after the election, once the votes have been verified. Two meetings in December, two meetings in January, one meeting in February due to mid-winter break that third week. Then two in March, two in April, two in May, two in June. Board retreat dates for the upcoming year would be the winter retreat on December 6th and then the following summer retreat set for July 10th. So I bring to, those to you for presentation and any discussion, and I'll be up for a vote at the next meeting.
Looks good.
Thank you very much. Now we move into our action items. First thing is the personnel list. The administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
It's been second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It has been approved. Approval of the auditing firm. The administration recommends approval of the auditing firm as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Addendum to the course catalog. The administration recommends approval of the addendum to the course catalog as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
It's been second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Next, we go through policies that we have reviewed at our last board meeting. First is the administration recommends second and final reading approval to rescind policy BFG, policy review and evaluation as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
And it's been second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. Next, the administration recommends second and final reading approval of policy BHE, board member entrance as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
Okay.
It's been second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The administration recommends second and final reading approval of policy BI, school board legislative program as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
And it's been second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Policy BJ, school board memberships. The administration recommends second and final approval of policy BJ, school board membership as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The administration recommends second and final reading approval of the annual update to policy JC, JCA, JECB, school attendance zones, transfers and withdrawals as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Some moved.
It's been moved and it's been second. Any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes.
If Lindsay Ann could answer a couple of questions real quick for me, and maybe, Mr. Price, you can answer some of these. In the non-resident section of this policy, we talk about tuition. I got a couple of questions for you on that. I noticed inside the policy, it doesn't really give a tuition. Is that in another policy or have we established that? How did we establish a number for that?
We've established, it's not in another policy. That's a great question. You've stomped me. I'm trying to think of where that is contained. I don't believe, I believe it's at the district's, I know it's at the district's discretion, it's not laid out in statute, but I don't believe that we have it written in a policy, the actual, the actual number. I don't think that's a board policy anywhere.
So in other words, we really don't have a non-resident fee established?
We absolutely do have a non-resident fee established. We just don't, I don't think it was established by the board. I believe it was established by administration and is not included in a board policy.
Okay, so somewhere it says it's $1,500 per student.
Yes.
Somewhere.
Yes.
In this building.
Yes.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about is some of the waivers that are in here for non-residents. Under certain circumstances, one being that if you give a tax receipt that you own land that is assessed at $300 or more, according to 596330, I guess that's a state statute?
It is. That is very specifically laid out in that statute.
Okay. And then the second state statute I'd like an interpretation on, is a person so situated as to be better accommodated by a school of an adjoining district. That's also statute 5963490. You have any idea what that means?
To be honest with you, sir, I have looked at that, at that portion. Off the top of my head, I would hate to give you a bad interpretation of that statute. I know that there are various portions of it, but I really don't want to hazard a guess without, without reading it very specifically. I mean, I can, I can do that and come back and discuss that.
If I may, Mr. Cox, my, my assumption is that sometimes students may require special needs or special services that may not be available in their resident school or resident district, but may be made available at the neighboring school or neighboring district. And this gives the ability for them to do that. So if a student needs to be served in a very specific way in their home district or home school is incapable of doing so, this is the clause that allows that to happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Wow, we got through that. Board superintendent comments or requests. As you know, it's a busy season. Graduation is right around the corner, starts Thursday evening with adult ed.
Yes.
So, a lot of stuff is happening. And I think Thursday at Plantersville is the magnet school showcase, and Friday is Brown's Ferry's showcase. And I hear our elementary magnet schools are doing phenomenal.
I wanted to jump on that. Well, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Gaskins and I ended up, not ended up, chose to go to Pleasant Hill Stream Academy Friday, was that Friday?
Yes.
And y'all, I'm gonna tell you what, I was blown away by these children. First of all, I mean, so many of their teachers said, well, they're smarter than we are, they're doing all these things. And when a little first grader read something to me, and the word distinguished was in that, how do you know that word? And she says, why wouldn't I know that word? I'm like, I don't know, it's a really big word for a first grader. But it was just phenomenal. We were so impressed by all the things that they're doing out there, and, I mean, they closed at 10 o'clock, and I was still wandering around talking to people. But it was, it was just phenomenal. And if you know somebody going out there, or you, you know, want to, I guess, extend your, bring your children out there, I highly recommend it. It's, it's amazing. And you might wanna jump on that, Ms. Johnson.
Well, my comment was the chicken life cycle.
Yes.
Where the, was he kindergarten?
That young man, he was amazing, yes.
Kindergarten, you know, explained it very well, and explained, you know, what they did and how they got there. And I believe that they said they would be selling eggs next year.
Yeah, they're gonna raise chickens and sell eggs.
It was just really, you know, amazing to me.
Yes, yes.
And I'd like to throw in, you know, we're very proud of our seniors who will be graduating, and many of us attend baccalaureate services on Sunday, and both the ones I attended were phenomenal.
The ones I attended were also student-led and, and students-in-the-word-led, and they were phenomenal services for our young people.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks to all of you for attending the CTE completer ceremony earlier this evening. It's so rewarding to see students pursuing a passion of theirs over multiple years while in high school. Not only are all of these students officially career-ready, but they are also set up for success in the next chapter of their journey. Congratulations to the Waukamaw High girls soccer team who successfully defended their state championship two weekends ago by defeating Powdersville 2 to 0 to become back-to-back state champions. We look forward to honoring them at an upcoming board meeting. Way to go Warriors. Since our last meeting, we've had, we have named several of the year winners for the 23-24 school year. Our rookie teacher of the year is Elizabeth Bradshaw from Waukamaw Middle. Our bus driver of the year is Barbara Snyder from the Waukamaw area. Our support staff member of the year is Nurse Nancy Crawford from Kensington Elementary. Our assistant principal of the year is Ms. Denitra Middleton from Waukamaw Intermediate, and our principal of the year is Travis Klatka from Waukamaw Intermediate. So, congratulations to all of those outstanding educators, and thank you for a wonderful year. As mentioned earlier, it is graduation time again. GCSD will be celebrating the class of 2024 over the next two weeks, beginning this Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Howard Auditorium, where we will have our adult education graduation. There will be no school on Monday due to Memorial Day, but then, we will have our four high school ceremonies each remaining night of the week in each school's football stadium, beginning at 7:30 PM. Tuesday is Carvers Bay, Wednesday Georgetown, Thursday Waukamaw, and Friday Andrews. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We have an executive session for the purpose of update on pending legal matter, student appeals, and parent appeal regarding out-of-district tuition. Is there a motion that we go into executive session?
Some moved.
Second. I'll call for a question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session.